On this meeting order, please stand for the pledge.
Pledge and refuse to defy.
From the United States of America, into a republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Move on.
Mayor Patterson.
Here.
Mr. Richmond.
Here.
Mr. Cook.
Here.
Ms. Hefner.
Here.
Mr. Swett.
Here.
Ms. Boeckrey.
Here.
Make the motion to excuse Ms. Rengar.
Yes, I can do that.
Motion for any discussion, vote when ready, please.
Mr. Richmond?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Ms. Hefner?
Yes.
Mr. Swett?
Yes.
Ms. Boeckrey?
Yeah.
Approval of the mat, moving on to approval of the mat. And ten motion to approve the August fifth twenty twenty-five minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Any additions or corrections?
Uh, didn't catch who made the motion, and you seconded. Okay. Got it.
Vote when ready, please.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Ms. Hefner?
Yes.
Mr. Swett?
Yes.
Ms. Boeckrey?
Yeah.
Mr. Richmond?
Yes.
Moving on to August twelfth point twenty-five minutes.
So moved.
Second.
What's that? To make a motion to approve?
To approve.
Motion on the floor to approve, any additions or corrections? Vote when ready, please.
Ms. Hefner?
Yes.
Mr. Swett?
Yes.
Ms. Boeckrey?
Yeah.
Mr. Richmond?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Moving on to the minutes for the night twenty, night two meeting, twenty twenty-five.
Make a motion, Boeckrey?
Second.
Vote when ready.
Mr. Swett?
Yes.
Ms. Boeckrey?
Yeah.
Mr. Richmond?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Ms. Hefner?
Public participation, anybody on the sheet back there? Right behind you, Sergeant.
No, no.
Wait here. Moving on a minute, letters of communications, anybody? Get any communications from anybody? Anything anybody wants to share? Moving on, administrative reports, finance officer.
Uh, my report was submitted in the packet, financial report. Uh, is there any questions on any of that? Moving down, we've been talking off and on about the Jackson Township EMS potential contract, no additional information to report at this time on that. The committee in the whole discussed about potential jet expansion. North Point, we need a petition for that, and currently, they, they're contemplating the potential jet expansion, so that's kind of on pause at the moment. Moving down, we talked about the, or have been talking about potentially moving some money from Star Ohio to a portfolio. Me, the whole, I had a couple of questions come up in regards to the rate, the, the fees, so I forwarded an email out to everyone one day last week. So at meeting, I had, the committee in the whole, I had the chart that showed like the probability of interest rates in a year from now. The specific questions that were brought up was the fees, and in that email, it showed that we currently pay a fee, management fee of point one five percent, which is billed quarterly. And then the yield, there were the variance. So the question, why do you not achieve the higher rate? Really what that comes down to, the yield depends on the length of the term, whether it's a bill or a note. Shorter term's gonna have a higher rate, so it just depends if it was moved into the portfolio, what, uh, the length of, of how, how long you're gonna term your investment, so. So I emailed that out, I don't think there are any questions on any of that. Next Fed meeting, September seventeenth, so coming soon.
They said we had thirty days after the break, if they, if they lower rates, we have thirty days before we make a decision, correct? Obviously, you wanna do it sooner rather than later, but I think one of the representatives said there was thirty days to live.
Yeah, one of the two did say that.
Anything else? Matt, you got anything else to share? Any questions?
That's all I had. Any questions or discussion, if anybody has anything?
Moving on to the EMS chief, thank you, Matt. Moving on to EMS chief, no report, fire chief, police chief, any questions for Sergeant Brochus, he's here. Um, there's a recommendation by Sergeant Brochus to, uh, to appoint or hire Tom Bailey as an auxiliary officer, starting night fifteen twenty twenty-five at a dollar a year.
Is that, that the budget?
No, it's not, but we can put it in the budget, just being so.
We need a motion on that?
Yeah.
So moved.
There's a motion and a second, any other discussion? Vote when ready, please.
Ms. Boeckrey?
Yeah.
Mr. Richmond?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Ms. Hefner?
Yes.
Mr. Swett?
Yes.
Thank you, Sergeant Brochus.
Thank you, go ahead, no more questions?
Yeah, thank you very much. Thanks for everything.
Thank you.
Have a good night. Utility director, um, moving on, there's a recommendation to hire Braden Solly as an operator, starting night fifteen twenty twenty-five, full-time, seventeen dollars an hour. Recommendations paid by Josh Bender and Brian Roberts, recommendation. Is there any discussion on this?
Is this the one that they're, they're bringing in, is kind of almost, it's a bad term, for the junior employee, a little less than?
I, I call it fresh, like new blood, fresh.
Yeah, that's what I was looking for.
Greens, another thing.
Yes, yes.
I interviewed him with, um, him with Brian, he's a great guy. Young, I think he's willing to work hard, and he'll do a great job, and we'll get him trained and open it.
I don't know if we have anybody down there to play to get it started off at the bottom level. And certainly, if we get Brian in at a different level on the water, we're not gonna bring him at seventeen dollars an hour, if they're coming from somewhere else.
Yeah, that's true.
He's also a local, too.
Uh, need a motion to take action on this?
Yeah.
For anybody that we hire, yes, we have to, anybody that we hire.
To make a motion to hire Braden Solly.
I'll second that.
Is there any other discussion? Vote when ready, please.
Mr. Richmond?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Ms. Hefner? Mr. Swett?
Yes.
Ms. Boeckrey?
Yeah.
Moving on, anything, any questions for our director? Moving on, Department of Public Works, there's no, um, I don't think, there's nothing from Josh. You got anything for Public Works? All right, well, they went and, you wanna give us an update on the bridge?
Sure.
You guys went, you guys walked the bridge, did that correct?
Yes, yes, uh, myself, Brian, and Scott Long.
Is this supposed to be done? Are we satisfied?
Yes, I think we're overall satisfied, there is some, uh, some things we need to get addressed with that, it's a minor stuff, uh, that Bernie Engel needs to get done, uh, some rough spots that we did before, the, uh, the way epoxy coat, they mentioned amongst smaller issues, minor issues, but, uh, once that's done, uh, the coat's on there, the guardrail's on, uh, expect it to be open, um, the nineteenth of September, uh, so next Friday. So we're really looking forward to that, uh, it's been a long time coming, it's been closed for two, three years, uh, in the project, uh, I think both, two of my previous predecessors have been working on, uh, and then I can talk about East Broadway, too, if you'd like.
Sure, please, yes. There's no questions on the bridge?
I have a question on the bridge.
Yes.
Are we going to do a ribbon cutting or anything?
Yeah, think about doing that, uh, not against it, uh, what is council's?
I'd like to suggest that if we can, that you and the mayor do it, but.
I'm working, I don't, I mean, when do you wanna do that? Yeah, I mean, when do you wanna do that?
But when you, when you.
You got festival on the middle of, um, I mean, you gotta probably do it the day that it's done, right, before you open it, is that?
It doesn't have to be huge, but I think it would be.
We can think about doing that.
Full opportunity?
After, I mean, I won't be here the nineteenth, I do have a final, uh, inspection meeting with Bernie Engel and our inspector, uh, the Tuesday after, uh, maybe sometime after that, I don't know, I do believe the mayor should be there for this, uh, and his schedule is kind of tight these days, but, uh, we can probably figure something out that is.
I think a nice announcement on our village Facebook page, if you revitalize it, it'd be perfect.
That will, that, yes, we'll definitely do that.
Yep. People seem to be responding well to.
They do.
People are excited about it getting opened.
Yep.
Yeah, would you have one, um?
And then the, uh, East Broadway, uh, north side of the road will be affected next, Wednesday? Yeah, next Wednesday, and then the south side of the street will be reopened on Thursday. And there's certain intersections, uh, was it Gillette? Well, certain intersections will be affected and closed off for the duration of, how north side is, uh, North Beecher, Gillette, the other one, uh, for the duration of the project. Late November is the completion date now for East Broadway overall, uh, the hundred block of west, of East Broadway, uh, is taking a little longer because of a gas line that needs to be lowered by, what do you call it, by Columbia Gas, that was not thought about before, uh, so I had to do the design and do all of that before we can actually get that hundred block, so. But overall, East Broadway, uh, it's coming along, uh, south side, I think, last few days, with the new curb and new aprons, that looks great, uh, it's obviously lower than the, uh, existing road, and I think that's a overall good thing, uh, but it's also gonna be more secure and last as for you to come.
So when it's done, the actual surface will be lower than the old surface?
Yes.
Yeah, 'cause I think we just kept paving and paving and paving and paving on top of it, which I think they did in the past, it's, you'll find out on a lot of the roads, rather than the middle downward like you're supposed to, and then pave them, that's what they did in the past. Do you have anything else on that?
On those two projects, I do not.
Any questions about those, about the Broadway? Sidewalk guys called me, they are complete with, um, the Cherry Street, looks great, went down there, um, you couldn't even walk on it, in, in the winter, it was not safe, because of the slope, I don't know, just, I don't even know what that slope would've been, it was, it wasn't safe, well, that's been fixed, um, the, the roundabout, uh, portion was complete, they called me and asked me to come up and take a look at, we was talking about cutting out in front of the whistle stop to make like a handicap accessible, um, they could not get the, the fall that they needed with the area that they had to get ADA compliant, so, um, we had a concern from at least one person in the past that, that said they couldn't get up the curb, that was the discussion, we talked, that the, the business owner wanted it, that fellow, I talked to Jesse Long, and she said at this point, it's really not that big of a problem, so, we advised them not to do that project, but we did have them, I did have them fix a portion of Main Street, um, just north of, while they was in town, just north of, um, Walnut Street, where as you came down the sidewalk, there was a section there missing, if you was in a, I got a call about it a year ago, right, when I first came on, um, in, in the sidewalk, so when you came, it was, uh, there was a section missing out, it was probably a two-foot section missing out, a four-foot section, um, that, that was cut out, um, so I had them fix that, and I just had them take the whole thing out, because on the other side of it, the elevation was, was way off from the other one, so they just kind of tied it together. I do know that we had a person that was in a wheelchair, I don't think they're no longer around, they couldn't even get down through there, so, they, it's, it's, it's handicap accessible now, so, um, but, so I'm sure we'll be getting a bill for that, but we were, we did not do the big chunk, I believe, that was the, well, I don't know what the biggest chunk was, I thought it was like that curb cutter or whatever, but by the sidewalk, but I have to make a estimate, but, um, we will be making a save, having savings or not, um, putting the handicap ramp in front of the whistle stop, but we did incur a little bit more of a cost, because I haven't fixed that sidewalk down there, so. Is there any questions on that? Moving on, uh, nothing, uh, Public Works, Public Utilities, get through that, okay? Or the building administrator?
Yes.
Cause you wanna call her, Jake, first?
I will, just do it one second, so yeah, code enforcement, uh, well, first off, we've had a very, we've had a very, very busy day today. Yes. Uh, there's been a fire, there's been a whole bunch of stuff we've worked on today, but it's all getting done, uh, we've, we've been doing at least one drive around with each other, at least once a week, uh, at least an hour or so, uh, I think overall, there's been a lot of progress, uh, but there's a lot of, a lot of things that still need to be accomplished over time, so a lot of, a lot of, a lot more work for, for Jake here to get done, um, so I'll throw that in there, but, please, Jake, uh, if you could please go over your summary report that you sent us, this is kind of, uh, from April fifth, around the time you came in, to the other day, yesterday, uh, and going forward, probably to a month to month, I'm thinking, or, or in overall, if we have on this.
Well, you're gonna slow down quite a bit before yourself.
Yes.
Um, I just, show what I do every day, or?
Sure, so do that, uh, go over your report, yeah.
I just, every day, I usually come in here, I talk with Josh, figure out the, if there's anything new going on, just emails, but every day, I go out and drive around the whole village of Portage, uh, Portage, oh my gosh, North Baltimore, and I just, I keep on looking for violations and anything that I come back, I direct contact with the police department as well, um, my job entails me usually giving a verbal warning, or try to talk to them, to try to figure out the situation before having to go to the next step, unfortunately, that doesn't happen a lot of times, so the next step for me is to make contact with them or not, that leave them, uh, a detailed letter of the violation that they have done, property that be either grass and not full vehicles, litter, et cetera, um, I, I can give them a lot amount of time depending on the violation, like grass is five days minimum, litter is seven to fourteen days, if there's special circumstances or something, I might give up to thirty days to get certain things done, especially with the elderly, or somebody has health problems or something like that, I am totally gonna give them thirty days, it's just reasonable, um, again, if people are making progress on their messes and littering and stuff like that, I will still come and make contact with them eventually, talk them like, hey, thanks for the progress, I appreciate it, can we continue on, what's your plan of action, um, usually everybody so far has been very, very receptive with me, uh, getting things cleaned up, um, there's always gonna be those individuals that do not want to cooperate or to help out, um, unfortunately, those, I have to give a process of giving them two violations, on the second violation, if they don't wanna reach in, talk to me, or fix the issue at hand, I directly go over to the police department, um, since Mr. Lafferty is out right now, I'm directly corresponding, talking with Mr. Brochus and Tom, um, they are going over the reports with me, uh, make sure that they're filed correctly, all my reports are correctly done for the, for the police, um, and then, if it's on the second one, it's their responsibility now, cause it is now a citation, um, they can take the citation and either have it here in mayor's court, which there's a handful of them that are here at mayor's court, or if we deemed it more of a problematic situation, we will give it over to the Bowling Green Court system, um, and again, there's this couple properties I'm dealing with right now, that I am, I've had to deal and give them over to the Bowling Green Police Department.
It's a process, isn't it?
Well, we're prosecutor now.
Sorry, prosecutor, yes, um, I wish it'd be faster in some properties, I wish people would be a little bit more receptive, but this is a kind of a timely job, and a lot of things aren't done in the manners in which we would all like to have it done.
Just stay on top of it, please.
Yes.
Thank you, Jake.
I, I make sure that everything I do, especially to help Mr. Bender, um, every report I have is on our code enforcement website, or, uh.
Database server, yeah.
Server, thank you, um, I have narrative reports on every single property, especially the ones I give reports on, I have narratives on them, I have every violation, I have pictures on every single one, I have timestamps of every single one, I have body camera footage on every single one, so there's no other question on whether what I have done or not done, you can look it up, it's there for everyone to see, um, and then I'm always taking phone calls, I leave my calling card, which is an awesome paper, it tells you who I am, please give me a call, my work phone number, or an email, that has been really, really awesome, that's been working a lot, cause a lot of people don't wanna talk on the phone, they wanna do emails and stuff like that, um, but overall.
Could you also please give council on your way out a business card, too?
Yeah. Yep.
I have a quick question, if you don't mind.
No, gladly.
How are we, cause I don't know how, but, um, you have no code better than I do right now, how are we handling weeds that are six, seven foot tall that have been sprayed, and now they're not down, but they're not removed?
There is still a light code violation, there's a couple properties that I have to deal with that, um, it's that whole process of, yes, they are making progress on their property, is it the progress that we want at the time? No, I, there's a property I've talked to, they went and sprayed the weeds, the weeds are still there, they're dead, okay, so now I have to go back again, start the whole process of trying to communicate with them, I leave them my card, that property in questioning took five days to get back ahold of me for the same situation, I have to explain to them again, hey, thank you for spraying it, I really appreciate it, but you gotta knock them down, and then they'll tell me their situation, and it'll take them a couple days for them to do it.
Sometimes if they are constantly messing with us in a way, we will just give a violation five days after that, we'll just assess the property, or else I can give a citation.
But just knocking them down and just letting them away there?
No, they have to remove them as well, that's, that's a light code, that is, they need to remove the foliage or the grass, there is options, I always give everybody, cause our maintenance department has pickups and drop-offs for vegetation, I also gave them local businesses.
Vegetation, they do?
Yeah, they take like trees, or.
Yeah, it's just brushes, brushes.
Brushes hook up.
No trees, no, it's just brushes.
I'm sorry, that's what I meant, and a lot of things in question is just brush or tow grass, so, but again, yes, they are one hundred percent supposed to be removing it, if they're not, then they're gonna get it out for me eventually, and start the whole process all over again, until I have to either, they take care of it, or I have to give it to the police department.
So I'm confused why we have to start the whole process over again, if it's the same weed, if it's, you know, if it's the same violation, why wouldn't it be, and I'm just asking, why wouldn't it be, you go back and it's not completely done or taken care of, why wouldn't it be the next step?
I mean, I, I don't wanna try to make everybody upset, especially in town, if they knocked down the weeds that they do want, I'm really happy, I would like to talk to them to see, why didn't you remove them, is there a reason why I didn't remove them? If there was, I'd like to give you some understanding, like what if they had a health issue?
And I, I understand, and I, I agree with working people, this particular incident that I'm thinking about, it's been since May, and it's, you know, they, they actually, they're from last year.
I mean, I'm dealing with that with two oh nine Frazier, I'm dealing with that with three oh one Poe Street, I'm dealing with that on Broadway Street, I'm dealing with that on Wabash, I'm dealing with that on, on Tar Street, I'm dealing, I mean, I can go on for a minute.
Yeah.
I mean, there is properties where the, the weeds are over seven foot tall.
I know.
Frazier Street, I, I, Frazier Street, for instance, I have.
Richardson.
Richardson, I have violation, violation, citation, didn't do anything, so I had to get another violation for littering and grass that got sent to BG Court, still nothing done, three oh one Poe.
Well, we, what we're getting, one of the, what I got from BG was, we're trying to work with these people.
Yeah.
Well, I don't think they understand that we've tried to work with them a year before we've even sent it to them, is what the problem is, right, so, not, then we send it over to them, and they're saying, well, now we're trying to work with them, which hopefully Bowling Green works with them, but then, the, the good thing about sending it over there is it starts becoming misdemeanors, so at some point, when they keep ignoring and neglecting as they did with us, it starts becoming an actual, of, yeah, they're, they're gonna get, like M fours, I think, is what the, the letter was that I got, so, and potential, like serious fine, I think it even said, possible jail time.
They don't show up, it's jail time.
Yeah, so, it, it's just a horrible process, that, I mean, the, the whole process takes forever, and, I mean, I, I'm hearing you, we, you know, we want, we wanna be effective, but I think, guys, I think we're much farther today than we was when we started this process, would everybody agree on that? No, we're not? I would say we are.
I would not agree.
Miles, with miles, that doesn't shock me, but yeah, by miles, uh, would you agree with that, that we're?
I think we have, we're definitely doing better and better, every, every, we were doing better, uh, I mean, we're not, we're not in this for the money, we're in this to get our properties cleaned up, uh, so we're in the mayor's court, Bowling Green Court, we just, we don't care if we don't see that money again, we just want the property cleaned up.
But I guess, and I understand on the properties being cleaned up, if there's, um, if there's debris on there, but we're talking about weeds, are, are weeds having to go to Bowling Green to be addressed, if I thought we were gonna go in and take care of and assess it to their taxes?
If it's against the house, um, it, it's, it's hard for us to charge, what, two hundred fifty bucks for an assessment on someone for just the weed around the house, but we would probably give a regular citation to mayor's court in those situations?
Is it not more, more likely to happen when it's like an abandoned property, or somebody that's, then we're gonna go on the property, 'cause I, I, like, I maintain my property, but don't come on my property and mow it, or there's gonna be a problem, right?
Right, right.
So don't come on my property and mow it.
Of course, of course, we'll give you a warning. Uh, by, official violation, and then according to our code, uh, we have five days, you have five days to clean it up, or, uh, we have the ability to cite you, or go on your property and mow it, and, and assess it.
All right, what else we got, any other questions? All right, move on to your report, please.
Okay, um, anything else?
Thank you very much, Jake.
Good.
I'll give you a kudos, the property on the north side of the tracks at Poe, on the east side, that old camper and all kinds of stuff was back there, that's all, appears to be gone.
Yep.
And I wanna thank you for your report.
You're very welcome.
Thank you for all your.
Yeah, no problem, I love this job, it's fun.
Have a good night.
Thank you. Yes, please, I'll trace it out, so they are aware. Thank you.
Hey.
Thank you, Jake, and I'll see you tomorrow.
Yes, sir.
Mayor's Court, tomorrow.
Yes, sir, after Clara often.
Yep, we're trying to get more hands down with mayor's court also, to kind of, I think it's in a way, keep mayor's court, uh, not accountable is probably the word, but make sure that the, our side is being heard in the public hearing for these individuals who are breaking our light laws, and, and littering, and all that. Okay, going on to my report, my primary report, Stormwater Project, so the design phase is complete, uh, right now, we're just reviewing the documents they sent over, uh, there should be a file viewing, uh, September twenty-third, that week, sometime, I can't remember the exact date, uh, the mayor, uh, really would like to involve, so we're working on that schedule, which is not a problem at all, uh, but that's in the works, and we are looking at potential funding, we'll work with calories to the, any of the grant opportunities out there for the construction and administration of that, those two projects, of the reservoir and the park. Next up, the new computers, uh, new computer will be set up on September nineteenth, uh, for the police department, the streets department, EMS has one, and for the, up here, uh, in this main office, so that is gonna be done ahead of the October fourteenth deadline that Microsoft gave us, unfortunately, but that is in the works, it's gonna be done, and we'll be good. Cybersecurity, um, uh, at the recommendation of Intech, uh, I have transitioned us from Tread Micro to Microsoft Defender, uh, for our cybersecurity program, uh, it's about five hundred more annually, uh, but, based off of my research, and again, recommendation by Intech, who I do trust in these things, uh, we will be better protected going forward, and I think it's a small amount to pay, uh, for peace of mind and social security in general. Okay, going on, uh, grants, uh, we were recently awarded six hundred eighty-eight thousand in state fiscal year twenty thirty, that could be moved up ahead of schedule if other programs fall off, uh, for CR eighteen and Po Road Multi-Use Path Project, basically, this is a first phase in my overall plans for connecting our neighborhoods, connecting Eagle Land, connecting, well, just, well, Baltimore in general, this first phase is about a ten-foot wide, uh, multi-use path on the north side of eighteen, this starts just from Briar Hill to the grocery store, help our senior citizens get to the grocery store safely, uh, my overall goal is to have a ten-foot wide multi-use path in Loves, all the way to Tar Street, uh, that will be a couple phases down the road, I can't Uh, that will be a couple of phases down the road, I can't do too much, um, east of Poe, north of 18 right there in Halle Field, because future development, we would make them put that infrastructure in as part of that development. I don't want them tearing up what we put there, it doesn't make sense, so we can wait on that. Uh, then this also includes a five-foot wide sidewalk on the west and east side of Poe, uh, from the intersection of Poe and 18 all the way to Water Street. Uh, a future phase would include Water Street to Eagleville, and, uh, all the way down Water Street on, through our brand-new bridge we're dunking in next week, all the way to Park. Uh, so we're connecting every part of this village. Um, we will, I also expect us to have a new Eagleville Bridge within the next two, three years, along with a adjusted realigned Poe Street on Eagleville to accommodate more sidewalk, but also a safer, um, way for traffic to get through. Uh, the county engineer's office is in charge of that bridge, and they are doing a study on both the intersection and the bridge by DGL consultants, um, and we will look for additional funding through private safety office school in the future, uh, from Eagle Landing to Rudolph, but right now, we're looking to get safety office school funding for the three sides, side streets off of East Maple, closest to the school, it was Gillette, uh, I forgot the other two. But we'll get funding for those right now, the five-foot sidewalks, uh, just again, trying to connect the village and make sure kids, in this case, especially well, in all cases, but in this case specifically, can get to school safely, uh, whether it be walking or on bike, bike even. Next up, uh, school traffic signals. I was approached by the Wood County Health Department a couple of weeks ago, they said they had some extra money in their budget, and I jumped on and said, hey, we need more school traffic lights, uh, especially on Rudolph. So we're gonna get two on Rudolph, uh, the flashing ones, we have to create our own signs after this, additional cost shouldn't be too much. And then we're gonna get one more on East Cherry by the elementary, at least, you know, the elementary school already has two on Main Street, but again, what additional safety, I'm also thinking about expanding our school zone on Rudolph, uh, making it longer. Uh, and if the people keep speeding through there, I've talked to officers about this, I've talked to Ryan Delaney, we're all behind it. Uh, he's making it safer for those.
What does the law say? How long, how far can you make it? What, is there, I'm sure it's, I'm sure it's dictated by the.
I'm sure it is.
Traffic law defines on where it starts and where it ends.
I haven't gotten that specific yet.
I couldn't be wrong, but isn't there one that we have to pay for?
Yes.
We're going to pay for it?
They were going to pay for two of the traffic lights, they wanted to incorporate walk-on and all of their stuff. And I said, well, we might as well install that at one time, one swift action, so I said, let's put another one on the tab, uh, and get that third light, so again, East Cherry, one on East Cherry, and then two on.
Is that like 2,500 dollars or something?
200 dollars approximately, yes.
There's money in the budget for that.
Gosh, you have, yes, yes.
I know, I looked, there is.
My God. So, uh, the health department is putting in $8,600 for this project, and we are putting in approximately $5,000. Uh, so I think it's a pretty damn good deal, I've been thinking about this for quite a while, actually. It doesn't make sense why we don't have traffic, uh, flashing lights, uh, typical school zone on Rudolph. Uh, so it's been bothering me for quite a while, I jumped on the opportunity, and it should be getting done. And, uh, our guys are installing it, so we're sending some money that way also. Uh, and I'm, I'm looking forward to getting these installed and getting this saved for our, our students. Okay, any questions on any of that so far? We've talked a lot, okay. Uh, Thursday, September 11th, uh, at the library, uh, there's gonna be a connecting rural Wood County feasibility study going on. Uh, just put parentheses what they have there, I do have it, as much as you saw, there's a whole flyer there. Uh, this is kind of, it concludes, what's included is our, our, they came, GL, GL cap came to here, did a quick study with one or two of our residents, uh, and they're gonna want to bring that amongst other, other studies together and then kind of explain to us what, uh, what community needs, basically, what community's asking for. Uh, so that's, I'm sending Mason in in that case, I don't think there's anyone else actually out there, but yeah, if you have free time, come on over to the library, four to six, September 11th. And that's it.
Do you have another meeting scheduled at that same time?
Yes, that, that's why I will not be at that one, I will be here, so. Yeah, that makes sense, yeah, so we, yeah, council only have so much.
Is that all you got? Any questions for our village administrator? Moving on, clerk?
All I have is, uh, Mayor Patterson passed out my resignation letter to you guys, um, earlier this month, or last month, I can't remember. It's been a wonderful serving the village of North Baltimore, but I'm ready to be done.
So you'll be done October 91st, correct?
Yeah, I'm gonna stand and make sure everything's copied in the books properly, and just make sure everything is caught up.
Becky, you've done a great job for us.
Thank you.
I mean, I know exactly what you came into and what you, and you're leaving it a lot better than you're leaving it a world better than what you walked into, so thank you so much for that.
Thank you, Becky.
You are welcome.
You're very welcome.
You'll still be around though, right?
Oh, yeah, I'll help out.
No, what I mean is, you're still gonna be on EMS and still over at the library.
Still working libraries, still working EMS. So just stop and see me.
All right, thank you. Anything for the clerk? Do we go on to appoint a legal counsel?
Nothing, thank you, ma'am.
There you go. Uh, moving on to the mayor, I have nothing other than what I just shared with you about the sidewalks, is there any questions for me? All right, moving on to State Committee's Economic Community Development.
I don't have anything.
Okay, public safety?
Uh, we have a meeting at four o'clock on Thursday, um, I know you sent it out to everyone, like, did we have to advertise that, or else it was coming?
Uh, there's only two of you coming, so advertising is needed to.
Can I make a request that if, we're gonna do meetings that, four is a little early. Like, we're gonna try, if you want council participation, four o'clock's hard for us to make. I can't make it, so, I, I'd like to attend, you know, these meetings if available, but.
What is the time that it was for you?
Well, so our last special meeting, because it was busy, was 4:30, that's a little bit.
It's pushing for you?
It's pushing it, but that's okay, I made it work, but four is definitely.
Does 4:30 work for you if?
Yeah, yeah, I can, I can make it.
You can make 4:30?
Yeah, I can, I can make it work, I can just go into work earlier and get out that day, I mean.
Usually, the special meetings usually don't take that long.
Yeah, I, I look, yeah.
Right, so it's usually, you know, whatever.
Yeah, they're usually five o'clock, and we go through the stuff quickly, but.
Only because you can always speak on it, so.
Yeah, but four is, I'm definitely, I can't ever do a four.
But then for this week, is it too late to pump it to 4:30?
I, I, yeah, I'm out this week.
Okay.
Anyway, but just for future meetings, if, for attendance purposes, I think four is.
Thanks for sharing.
Yeah, well, thank you.
And that's all I have, is any questions?
Any questions for public safety? Moving on, public works?
Orderment one, I think it's set up?
Yes, yes, one o'clock with Environmental Structure Point, uh, me, Paula, and Josh Long, and that's kind of your, your first, I guess, first step in the right direction, I think. And, uh, they're gonna come look at the site with us and give us some good ideas, and they might even give us a free little understa- blueprint of sorts, uh, design, so.
Who's gonna do that?
Environmental Structure Point, uh, Eric Motts.
Yeah, yeah, you said that one.
Building on 18, that's at one o'clock?
One o'clock on Thursday, you open the.
I'd love to, I would.
Now, be at the site, all of them?
Okay. I guess Paula is the one, yeah, yeah, we're good, we're good, come on.
These are gonna be more than three, three or more elected officials there?
I don't believe so.
Is it elected officials or just council members? Do you know, is it?
Anytime you have a quorum of the body that's meeting.
So the mayor, it doesn't, the mayor can be there, right, even if there's two, because I can't vote, is it?
Right, you're not, you're not participating in that.
Can you please define quorum, how many, there's six council members, how many?
Four.
It has to be four for there to be a public meeting.
Quorum.
It's just quorum, okay.
Oh, not three, what was, it was three, it's four?
Quorum, that was, yeah, that was fine.
So three can legally, one place at a time?
I discourage it.
Yes, yes, okay.
But yes.
Highly discouraged, okay, that's fine.
That's a good one.
Moving on, we don't need to beat that in the ground.
Nope.
Anything else for?
No.
Any questions? Public works, moving on, public utilities?
Nothing.
Nothing, any questions for public utilities? Moving on to personnel policy, is, is anybody got any questions for finance? That we need to get them to Tim? Okay, moving on, personal policy and ordinance review.
I got it.
Moving on, new legislation, resolutions, motions, or there's a resolution number 25 dash 2025, a resolution authorizing the village administrator to execute a third amendment to the communication site lease agreement with spread spectrum LLC, it's approving the same terms, the lease terms. That agreement, I believe, is in your packet.
Yep, that is the second agreement, uh, they just came back today after this was already sent out. The second amendment, amendment four was never agreed upon, so it's actually the second, this will be the second one, not the third one, so next time we read this, they'll say something different.
Moving on, resolution number 26 dash 2025, a resolution, amendment, resolution number 1625, authorizing the village administrator to enter into a contract, or contract with Eagle Water for Neptune NY360, set up training singles signed on integration and annual subscription services.
Make motion to spend the second, third reading?
Motion for spend the second, third reading? Vote when ready.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Ms. Hefner?
Yes.
Mr. Swett?
Yes.
Ms. Boeckrey?
Yeah.
And Mr. Richmond?
Yes.
Make motion to declare an emergency.
To adopt as an emergency?
As an emergency.
Second?
It's a motion in the second. Vote when ready.
Ms. Hefner?
Yes.
Mr. Swett?
Yes.
Ms. Boeckrey?
Yeah.
Mr. Richmond?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes. Yes.
Question asked, why is this an emergency?
Well.
We've been working on this for quite some time.
Well, we were already with the three readings before, we just kind of adjusted it, this time to include a single sign on. Uh, and math leaves, if anybody wants to add to that, but basically, it's a better.
Are we on time, are we under time constraints, I guess is what I'm asking? Is there time constraints that we're under that we need to?
We already started the process with them, uh, under the original terms.
Okay, so, so.
Yeah, like, we were working, actually, I was working with April, and I was like, boy, I don't know, like, maybe we should look into the single sign on more, because the agreement we were under, we'd have to have two different residents that have two different sites to go to. You'd have to log out of that and go into your separate account.
I got you.
So then, I, I talked to the administrator, Mr. Bender, and then we called Brian Roberts, and we all stayed. We ran it by, discussed it, and then there's additional costs there, but.
But in order to get this through and to continue and to finish what you guys have already started, that's why you're asking?
Yes, but. Yeah, we've already, actually, we've already started it, some of the introduction's already been.
All right, thank you. Moving on, resolution number 27 dash 2025, resolution authorizing the village administrator to submit an application to the Wood County Local Park Improvement Grant Program. We have the village of North Baltimore out for the 2026 program. Moving on to second readings, ordinance number 2025 dash 20, ordinance vacating a portion of the unapproved right of way known as Oak Street situated in the village of North Baltimore, Wood County, Ohio, in Cabane, said vacated portion to Leslie Linguist and Richard A., Aunt Mary E. Cabello. Moving on.
This is 2025, that's what's happening.
You're right, it's 26.
This is actually gonna be the third reading?
Moving on, ordinance number 2025 dash 28, ordinance authorizing the village administrator to execute a first amendment to the commercial lease agreement with fiber optic management LLC, its DBA turnkey network solutions. Does that still need to be an emergency?
Did we skip one?
This is, we removed that one. Uh, this one's emergency because, uh, we're trying to not prolong this year of the contract to pass that day if there's already something that works.
Okay, so then we're not gonna meet again until next month, does that take us out of our timelines? Does, does their, does their current?
Right now, the agreement is in October, uh, right now, they're a month to month for September. Uh, but again, I wanna make sure that we don't prolong this agreement to pass, uh, September 30th, 2026, I think it was.
So if you guys wanna pass this as an emergency, if that, or wait till next month? Is there a motion to suspend?
We are, 2025 dash 26.
No, we're, that is moving to, that is moving to the third reading.
Okay, so it moves.
Yes, sir.
25 dash 28. Yeah, we've already had one reading on this, and now we're making it an emergency.
Thank you.
Again, I'm just trying to, uh, get this agreement signed and in the books already, because again, I don't wanna push it out past that year, uh, 2026.
So we are at the point where we're gonna suspend the second, third reading?
If you guys.
Third reading.
Please.
The third reading?
The third reading.
Okay.
Yeah.
So we.
So suspend the third reading.
Is there a second?
Yes.
Vote when ready, please, to suspend the second, or to suspend the third reading, please?
Mr. Swett?
Yes.
Ms. Boeckrey?
Yes.
Mr. Richmond?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Ms. Hefner?
The motion we passed was an emergency.
Motion in the second to adopt as an emergency? Vote when you get ready.
Ms. Boeckrey?
Yeah.
Mr. Richmond?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Ms. Hefner?
Yes.
Mr. Swett?
Yes.
Moving on, resolution number 23 dash 2025, a resolution claiming the official intent and reasonable expectation of the village of North Baltimore, behalf of the state of Ohio, to borrow to reimburse the street levy fund with the CT24AV slash CE33AV East Broadway Roadway reconstruction with the proceeds of taxes of debt of the state of Ohio. This, this, why, why would this state be in an emergency?
Well, it's a second reading, uh, but it's an emergency because we are really trying to disperse these funds as soon as possible. Matt, you have any?
Keep everything cleaned up.
True, we're gonna get this money dispersed as soon as possible.
Yeah, the student is dispersed as soon, you know, we naturally, we receive it.
I actually think we're behind schedule on that too, so we're refusing to disperse it.
Okay, well, it's up to council, does anybody wanna entertain a motion to suspend the sec- the third reading?
I'll make a motion to spend the third reading.
I'll second that.
Vote when ready, please?
Mr. Richmond?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Ms. Hefner?
Yes.
Mr. Swett?
Yes.
Ms. Boeckrey?
Yeah.
Motion to adopt as an emergency?
So vote.
Vote when ready, please?
Ms. Boeckrey?
Yeah.
Mr. Richmond?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Ms. Hefner?
Yes.
Mr. Swett?
Yes.
Next one's our assessments. Moving on, third reading, ordinance number 2025 dash 21, an ordinance authorizing the certification of the link utility to have a special assessment to the Wood County Auditorium to declare an emergency. Is there a motion to adopt this as an emergency?
Second.
So they can get them up there tomorrow?
Second.
That's what, that's what, that's the reason for the emergency.
Just to, yeah, the week.
We had our third readings, we had a discussion on this, just as a reminder, we had our three readings on these, we did our due diligence, and then so we passed it as an emergency, so they can get them up there tomorrow and get it certified.
Make an effective meeting.
Yeah, so there's a motion, there's a second. Vote when ready, please?
Mr. Richmond?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Ms. Hefner?
Yes.
Mr. Swett?
Yes.
Ms. Boeckrey?
Moving on, ordinance number 2025 dash 22, an ordinance authorizing the certification of grass mowing and a special assessment to Wood County Auditorium declaring an emergency.
I'll make the motion to declare emergency.
To adopt as an emergency, there's a motion to adopt as an emergency?
Second.
Go ahead.
First to suspend the rules.
Well, this is our third reading.
Okay.
Yes, all these are third readings, what we get is, okay.
Second?
We, we did.
I have a motion.
Yes, sir.
And some money over there, second.
There's a motion, who seconded?
He can pick who, or do you have a second?
Somebody, which one do you second?
It's okay.
Oh, then you.
We're gonna find out.
Okay, we're gonna make call with seconds, okay.
Keep it.
Okay.
Did we get a second?
Yeah.
Vote when ready, please.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Ms. Hefner?
Yes.
Mr. Swett?
Yes.
Ms. Boeckrey?
Yeah.
Yes.
Mr. Richmond?
Mr. Richmond.
Oh, Mr. Richmond, I'm so sorry, I, sorry about that, needed to go up on.
This is rapid fire.
Do you have a question?
This would clarify with Matt's, that twenty-two, twenty, twenty-two-five, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five, and twenty-six are all declaring an emergency, correct?
All of them, the next one?
Except for twenty-six.
Except for twenty-six, okay.
Becky explained it before the meeting started, so look how everybody was in here.
Yeah.
So that's three of the six, that's it.
Twenty-two, so, twenty-one, twenty-five.
We're going to, ordinance number twenty-two-five dash twenty-three, an ordinance acting special assessment of the cost of spending cleaning of the streets, alleys, ways, and other public places in the village of North Baltimore for twenty-two-five authorized certification of same to the Wood County Auditor.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt this as an emergency.
There's a second. Vote when ready, please.
Ms. Hefner?
Yes.
Mr. Swett?
Yes.
Ms. Boeckrey?
Yeah.
Mr. Richmond?
Yes.
And Mr. Cook?
Yes.
The ordinance number twenty-two-five dash twenty-four, I'm not going too fast, am I?
No, I'm good.
Okay. Ordinance number twenty-two-five dash twenty-four, an ordinance acting special assessment of the cost of expensive lighting of the street, alleys, ways, and other public places in the village of North Baltimore for twenty-two-five authorized certification of same to the Wood County Auditor.
Make motion that we adopt as an emergency?
I'll second that.
Vote when ready, please.
Oh, Mr. Swett?
Yes.
Ms. Boeckrey?
Yes.
Mr. Richmond?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Ms. Hefner?
Yes.
We have an ordinance number twenty-two-five dash twenty-five, an ordinance acting special assessment of the cost of expensive trimming maintained and planting of trees along the streets, alleys, ways, and other public places in the village of North Baltimore for twenty-two-five authorized certification of same to the Wood County Auditor.
And we need this as an emergency?
Yes, is the last one that we need?
I will vote that we adopt as
In that row?
Or, I will make the motion that we adopt as an emergency.
I'll second that.
Motion in the second, vote when ready, please.
Ms. Boeckrey?
Yes.
Mr. Richmond?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Ms. Hefner?
Yes.
And Mr. Swett?
Yes.
Moving on, ordinance number twenty-two-five dash twenty-six, an ordinance approving the transfer of funds appropriated for the fiscal year ending December thirty-first, twenty-two-five.
And we need to adopt this as an emergency?
No, no, it's just a motion to do it.
Okay. I'll make the motion to go up.
I'll second that.[1438.12]